Thank you. Paulie is out of the night and she's home. And dead good. First thing on the agenda is to review and approve events.
I had a couple of corrections. Under section seven of the last paragraph, it said, he said they should be able to keep it in good state next year. That should actually say something along the lines, they should be able to keep it flat next year with no tax injuries. That was what I said.
Was that on the hour of due exception?
That was concerning the total town budget. And under, the next sentence on it said, she said the town did not even meet the revenue goals last year. That wasn't what was said. It was said, she said, to increase your revenue line to make a flat budget is incorrect. That's what was said. Those are the two commentators.
I might add some spelling corrections as well as instead of saying in section seven, the quote comments, was talking about Sharon Wayne's comment about the Marin situation and it should be probably not Sharon felt, but Sharon stated or Sharon said.
Well, the other, well, there was one other thing too. But you're reminding me of something. I had on the second page too, Sharon Wayne said she lives on Lower Kennedy Road and has no problem parentheses with the Fournier. She didn't say that. She said, Sharon Wayne said she lives on Lower Kennedy Road and has no problem with anybody besides with the people who started the issue. Fournier's name was never mentioned. On second page.
Some of the words. So I'll move that we accept the minutes as a mandate.
Second.
Oh, those are paper. Three zero.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, next slide, the department had reports and I'll start with.
Thank you, Dave. Just two things tonight. On Tuesday, we'll be going up to the control school for the annual fire prevention program. We'll have the pre-K kindergarten, first graders going through the entire program. And this year, we have a smoke trailer that was donated to us from Sabat's Fire Department. And we're going to use that to demonstrate what it looks like to have a fire in a building. We use theatrical smoke. We did have it a few years ago and the kids really liked it. And now it's ours. So we'll be bringing that up there. And it'll start around eight o'clock and we'll run until about two. We'll run all those kids through it. And the second thing I have is the Grange Hall project. The piping was installed for the propane and the electrical line. All that would be, the propane tank will now be on the fire department side of the parking lot. The electrical line is connected them to the generator. And I met today with their new director and we're going to put something in writing exactly what the expectations are for both groups, the town and their group, and use it in their facility and how we're going to do that. And we'll put something in writing so a few years from now when none of us are around, everybody will remember what it was. And we'll get that done. What's up? I'll get it typed up and we'll give it to her to review and then I'll get it to the manager and get it all the legal stuff done so we can get it for you people and get it approved. And that's all I have.
Okay. I guess I, good evening. I have given you my report for the month, so that should be pretty self-evident. I just wanted to make a report on TechTech. They do have the equipment in place. They're working on getting it installed. There's a blower unit, there's another reclaim unit or whatever. I don't actually remember what pieces of equipment, but they're working on getting it ready. They hope to have it tested within the next two or three weeks. CMP is, I'm still waiting for them to come in for their final permit for the poles. They said this week or next week, so hopefully it'll be Monday, Tuesday of next week. That project seems to be on their schedule. Grange, just add to the Grange that everything seems to be going okay. We're going to ask, an attorney has to write a easement for the gas line and the electric line crossing the property line going over to the, from the Grange ownership to the town ownership. So there's got to be an easement on file. The RD who is managing the money, federal money requires an easement in place, so that's forthcoming. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Got a message from DEA last week. October 29th, intended to, we'll be having another drug payback. So we'll be getting that out there. I'm also going to be contacting the school, the high school. It was going to be distributed flyers hopefully. That is from, I don't know if I said it or not, it's from intended to, and it'd be down at the transfer station just like we had it earlier in the spring.
What was that thing?
October 29th.
And you said the high school?
The high school's going to be helping me out. I'm going to be contacting the school nurse. Yeah, yeah. They have volunteers.
Keep them.
Yes, something like that, yeah. Let's see, JPMA, that is our mandatory training. Everything is online. I have probably half my offices that are done that right now. Has to be done before the end of the year, so the other half are working on it as we speak. Apple Fest went off with no problem, I believe. We had five K with no problem. And then I went out and hung out down there for a little bit. Everybody, once the sun came out, it was nice. And Fire Prevention Week, we're also going to be up there on Tuesday with Andre and his guys. That's about all of that.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. See, after tomorrow is our annual fuel assistance golf tournament. I contacted about forty businesses in town and over fifty percent have donated, which I think is commendable. The donation we received tonight, we will, we will have raised over sixteen hundred dollars on the town behalf and we're coming back to the town for fuel assistance. And that, that's not coming, but we're coming back for, the guy's playing golf, I believe there's five teams. The town's, the town team, we have two members sitting at the table here and one of our policemen and David Brim will be on the team. Sorry, I won't make it this year. I'm going to be out of town later. Tomorrow, we're going to be working with the railroad, see if we can get this track downtown schooled up a little bit. We're going to go get some hot dog, maybe put hot dogs on the tracks to the coal patch. That's all that was acceptable. We started putting up sand yesterday. Hate to tell you that, but we do have to do it. Be ready for winter. Mac Burgess, Mac sitting here tonight, I think, is doing a good job to the garage. The insulation is all on the sides of the garage. Now, new windows are put in today. Mac and his couple of us are putting on the, the Adelman. Doesn't make a big difference. Much bigger difference to us as one. Mac, it should be done in the middle of next week, it'll be complete. And the last thing I had, we had a complaint two weeks ago off the drive at the fairgrounds. We repaired that thumb today. So it's, it's still susceptible to washing, but it's much better travel than it was. Add a couple buckets of gravel to it, smooth it out. So it's, it's a pretty good shape. And there's a locust tree that fell down way up near the high school property. And we'll clean that tree out. Typical will probably be a hurricane by the way, but we'll clean it out and get that going at time. That's about all I have. Thank you.
You said that the driveway on the fairgrounds, not the driveway of the cabin going down to the athletic area?
Well, it's from up like the one up on the fairground.
The one that's over there?
Towards the exhibition hall.
Okay. What about the one on, you fixed the one at the high school already?
No, no. You're doing it one way up on top of the hill.
The one that goes here?
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't touched that one.
Yes?
Are you, are you talking about the road that I heard you indicated about the last meeting that you, for homecoming, when it's going down the sports field? Didn't you do, did you build some potholes and stuff around?
Oh, yes, we did. All the, on the sport, on the other side of the street.
Check, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we put some, we put some coal pads in the holes and we also put down some of the black iron out we have to kind of fill up the sides a little bit. I think it's, I think it's pretty good though.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just to tell you, we, we were close today, the office staff and I were at the mean disciple association. And then ten, a couple of, seven hours sessions today, one on product and another one on social media. And I know that tomorrow there's some more valuable training to get there as well. I also got a letter from the couple of incredibly lasers, snowmobile club. We get this game delay and this asked for permission to use their property for, which I believe includes the public horse garage and the Compton property as well. Is that over the Compton property?
And, and this, this piece of property here too.
Right. Yes, it's a piece of property. And I know they said this too because they never would have made any complaints and I know, but I wanted to check with you. I know one of the things that Mr. Jim is that we have to pass check with the trustees. You're a trustee, right? We're Compton trustees. If you want, I can refer to you for a wait and see if you have any conus trustees. Do they cross the trustees property? I think they do.
Yeah, they cross. And if they cross, the town garage property. And then that trail goes out on one of the fairgrounds, right?
They haven't built their, their purpose yet. I guess that's something that happens later, but they have, they have a little bit of a complaint, but before I just send it back to the function, I can leave if you'd like to stop.
Well, there's never been, everything has always been good.
Yep. As everybody understands, yep. I just told Rick a lot of that, I won't show you. The, and just the last thing is that we put our tax commitment book, the details of our tax group on the online, on the website so people can go there and check. You can go to Vision Appraisal, for example, if you know the tax map number or those kinds of things, but if you only want to do alphabetically, you know, if you look at under the bar, you just scroll down the M's and you can punch right up and tell a little details of the taxes.
Find out if you need tax?
Yep. Basically. I don't, it doesn't stay up to date like that. Thank you.
It's up to date on vision, though.
Yes, well, those are the pay when now. Those are the day I pay.
Right. When I saw Paulie today, she said that the tax, the election went well.
Yeah, we, we, it's not taxes, we're doing, we're doing the estimate. We had, yesterday we had collected seventy-three percent of the toll that was due for this first half payment, which is above usual. I don't know the exact amount we had last year, but it's seventy-three percent is what we're going for first year to do. They were, matter of fact, they were, they were, I was trying to keep up with the cash law, just that, that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing is the comments.
One more thing to mention that Kurt had mentioned. Kurt and I met with the state powers to be effective on the sidewalk on Kennedy Street. And we're going to be working on going out prepared for engineering firm to work on that. That's coming into, into being and it looks like this is going to happen. Just a matter of time and when the money is available. I believe he told us that the year fourteen was about to get constructed, what happened. Couple of years, three years down the road. But the main reason I brought it up is if and when this does happen, we need to look at snow removal, as snow being picked up and moved off the removal, we need to look at it in a different light now. We're going to have sidewalks going on first street in conjunction with doing, trying to do better on Main Street. We do the best we can with what we have. We're talking more equipment, more man, more man tunnel, take care of the sidewalk rather than we do.
We'll also probably add better sidewalks within a couple of years on Maple Street and, and Main Street and LeBlanc, because those are sidewalks that have been plowed in the past, but they're only four foot sidewalks. But we, our plan is to develop some cost estimates and do a, a job one way or the other. Maybe over a period of a couple of years to improve both your sets of sidewalks so we have what people we think we want.
Also?
Oh, yeah.
Just want to make a couple of comments. I've noticed that we, the November eighth ballot will be voting on a couple of issues that the town is putting forth for people to vote on. I haven't been to the meetings to discuss them in the past, but I thought I'd make some comments tonight. Number one is the, the ballot initiative to have a recall provision for selectmen.
Just so, not trying to be reeling, but there's a public hearing scheduled toward the nineteenth of, of October, which is a couple of weeks away. Public hearings are open.
And the ordinance already exists.
Yeah. But I'm here tonight.
Well. Where are you at?
I just want to, I haven't been here in the past. I'll probably be at that meeting and I'll speak out probably then. And, but I just wanted to express the opinion that I, I believe the, the ordinance will be that it takes ten percent of the voters to sign a petition and then a simple.
No, the, or maybe, it doesn't change the existing petition requirement, which is ten percent of the last gubernatorial election. So that vote, that amount will vary by.
Put it on the ballot and then a simple majority is there?
A simple majority with ten percent of the registered voters participating in the elections to make it out.
Right now, right now as few as three people can participate in this ballot?
Yeah. Well, my, my point is I will, I'll be opposed to that simply because I think the bar should be raised much higher to remove an elected official. I think when we elect officials, when we often disagree with them. I disagree with the selectmen over there as many times, but never would I think it would come to the point of recalling that. And I think that what you have in this town, there are, there are people who just won't like a decision someone makes and that is not a reason to recall. The bar should be raised very high. I believe like the, in the recall vote itself, which probably should be two thirds of the voters saying to recall and then have an election. I think we could just go through a lot of useless votes where it will be a costly people to vote on and it'll be, it'll be potential for abuse if the bar is kept low. So I'll be, just want to let you know that I'm opposed to that. Second issue I want to comment on is we're going to be voting on getting, accepting another four hundred thousand dollars from the federal government to go to the, the Grange Hall. Is that it?
Yeah.
Express my opinion in the past that we've got, what, eight hundred thousand the first time?
No, four, four, not four hundred.
For the first time?
Yeah.
And so they've given us another four now?
Four.
Okay, well, anyway, so we're up to about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money will be, is that correct?
Is it federal?
Federal.
So if I, so if I can just make my comment, just to get this straight where we're dealing here, I just want to say that I believe that will, what will happen, they will probably get approved, will be simply a monument to government waste at its best. You know, we're taking the dumpy old Grange Hall and putting eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of the US government's money into it at a time when we're supposed to be trying to reduce spending. I guess if there's any reason to vote for it, you would say, well, the federal government is going to waste money, they might as well waste it in our town. But when we say that works, we're saying, well, every other town should be doing the same thing around this country and it's just going to go on and on and on. I will vote no on that one there because I, obviously it's a, it's a waste of government money. They should have a better place to put it, reducing the deficit or to people who are on work or some, something better than to repair the dumpy old Grange Hall. And I just want to say that it would probably go through and it'll always, in my eyes, be a monument to government's waste at its best.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one question. I'd like to address the board. I'd like to know who's responsible for the safety and accuracy of the selectmen's meetings minutes? And I would like to know how the tape recordings are kept safe and who is going to protect them from being tampered or lost or whatever? And is it safe keeping of the tape records of the taxpayer's statements of priority for safekeeping by the board? And what's my question?
I think it's a correction.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't had time to break down your comment and answer at the same time. So it may be a lot easier to repeat this, but the tape recorder is not a part of my state law, period. It's not a part of the tape recording meeting. So we try to do the best we can with the equipment we have. In some ways people make mistakes. I don't know why the tape was blank. You and Mike were earlier meeting, I think, several chapters?
Who are you talking about?
No. Okay, so we tape our, we've had like one or two meetings in the past four years, I know of, that didn't work, the machine malfunctioned. That's happened, machines malfunctioned. And whether you're videotaping or tape recording will have malfunction. Here are, we keep those under, as far as I know, they have the locking key in the vault. I don't think they pass it around to the union. They, it also takes minutes to actually something. But if there's a security issue, they might let you know what you need.
I was just wondering who is responsible and if there was a place for that. Does, does that include the minutes also as indicated by using as a girl that sits there?
Right. She was in my direction and we provided a machine, laptop, as well as a tape recorder. I'm responsible for, I guess you call it security. The selectmen have to prove any minutes to get approved.
Okay. So we're kind of responsible too.
Yeah.
Based on kind of our memory of what the meeting, what was said and so. A lot, a lot of things easily.
Thank you, Mike.
You weren't here earlier, but we did discuss with Curtis about putting Agenda I along the next select board meeting to discuss actually videotaping the meetings instead of using a tape recorder.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, I, I just wanted to comment on the recall election just to hopefully clarify something because I'd not change Steve's mind as I respect his opinion, I just wanted to, to clarify that the existing ordinance has a very low standard. The existing ordinance says that you got to have ten percent of the last gubernatorial elections participants to sign a petition and then a two thirds majority of the voters present in that election to, to decide the matter. So theoretically, if, if the concern some people raised is that a lot of flood of recall petitions, whoever was interested in doing that missed their opportunity if this hits a new amendment gets approved because in theory, this election that's coming up, this is an off-year election, could potentially have a very low voter turnout. We've seen in the past as low as a hundred or a hundred and twenty or that type of thing. So theoretically, you could have had a situation where somebody files a recall petition to be taken up in this election cycle. You could have had a minimum number of people show up, we'll say a hundred or a hundred and twenty. And in the case of a hundred and twenty, eighty-one votes would decide the matter. So by requiring ten percent of the registered voters to validate the election, make the election result, the ballot results on election, but the ballot results valid, actually does raise the bar potentially above where it could be right now. You know, it, it may not be high enough to, to meet your expectations and I appreciate that and if the majority of people agree with you, then, you know, revisit it, but I just want to clarify that potentially what we're trying to do here is raise the bar for more than house stations. I agree.
What's that?
I have something to add too. Just recently, I was elected to the KBC Board of Directors and I hope that that will provide me with the opportunity to try to funnel some more things towards Monmouth. It's a nonprofit and it's not a paid position, but I, I will have to dedicate a, you know, quite a bit of time to Monmouth meetings when I try to move things towards Monmouth.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the warrant and public hearing date for the November eighth ballot question.
Mr. Jim, four questions, five questions, a question left in the library. And the, the questions are, the second, the first question we wrote on my ballot is the question of comprehensive development ordinance, which I made sure that it's corrected to be ninety days or thirty days.
Looks quite tight.
And the third, the second, labeled article three, which is the second one that voters will see on the ballot is, is the Shirley Anzoni ordinance, which will correct that setback problem, just sort of step. And the fourth one, I was, I mean, fourth one under the warrant is accepting the twenty thousand dollars that he was referencing for the range. And the fifth article is the ordinance recall of elected officials. We got this, the absentee ballots available tomorrow if it's approved there. And the polls will be open from eight to eight. The people who vote absentee ballot in, it's not tomorrow.
You move to read chapter one?
Second.
A little favor.
Thank you. Well, next thing on the agenda is the new assistance, general assistance ordinance, fantasy ADN tape.
Yeah, we were required, Mr. Jim, to update these standards we use every year, state law, and they pass these, they review these usually for inflation. And these are, we have what called overall maximum assistance. That means a person comes in, asks for general assistance and they're, say they're a family of one, just one person. That person would, for example, in this town, be eligible for an amount which is labeled here on the Kendall County, see on page two, five hundred and ten dollars in a month, any thirty day period. That's what that means. It was five oh three last year, it was adjusted by one point four percent for inflation that day. Family of four, for example, in the, would be eligible for up to one thousand three, one thousand thirty-seven dollars. They also have a couple of other maximums besides the overall, that's what we call the draw. There's a full maximum, if you were again a family of one, you'd be eligible for forty-six dollars, sorry, on the next page, forty-six dollars and fifty-one cents weekly. If you were again there four, you would be eligible for a hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Sounds like I'm going to. The, this is not adjusted to law for last year. Apparently there's no inflation. The, this is not adjusted law from last year, there was no inflation to this matter of vote. And the third one is housing maximum, they would tend to see for rent if we were unbeaten in Kendall County, it's in the bottom of page, it says, if we're two bedroom, for example, it would be four hundred and eighty-four dollars a month. That's not changed at all from last year. The only thing that got changed there, these maximums, the overall maximum, which is five oh three, five hundred. So that's, those are the only ones that are adjusted. And we really have to use these figures. You can, a couple of these, do your own surveys, like housing, this type of thing. We don't have a housing market like that, not as soon as we get that done. Yes, we'd like to have it quickly approved.
Hold wait, bro, second. Those in favor? Next thing is the financial report.
Chairman, I have a financial report, which is appropriation control reform, this is today's. That is a document that we produce monthly, but this is the first quarter we've reported. It's, it's a lot to show what's happening, but we're, from now on, we'll shut short more regularly. We'll do revenues that are next, you know, shortly after. The first page, for example, this budget, you know, it's broken down into about twenty-five apartment type. I've labeled in yellow on your sheet, the far right-hand corner, percentage expended. We are currently about, according to this budget, about twenty-nine percent into the fiscal year. That's a little bit more because it's, it's a quarterly, but if we're into October now, some October payments are made in advance. So it's, it can vary. If you look at the percentage, for example, administration is twenty-nine percent expended during the lockdown. You can expect that in most cases. For example, assessing, next one down, thirty-eight percent. But if you look into more detail on assessing, it shows that we've spent, we've paid mapping services a thousand dollars under a four thousand dollar budget. It starts to kick in from there. So it's just that we pay the assessor monthly. We have spent any county tax, that's due, no river floods. We've spent no debt payment, the debt service goes out, due sometime this next month. We have any elected officials, I think you paid, assuming if I remember, Christmas, for Christmas. Deploying benefits, thirty-three percent, that's above what I expect because I think it's going to be payments for workers comp, that sort of thing, that they save in most cases. Police retirement, twenty-three percent. General assistance, forty-four percent. That's a little higher than you were going to wish. Again, the economy is, as everybody's going, is not in great shape. It's been poor a lot, our poor survivors. So we've seen a bit of that tick in the last couple of months in applications. We have, for example, when you see under the very last part of general assistance, they're talking page three. It says other miscellaneous assistance, I think that eight hundred and fifty-three dollars is a funeral, that's a cremation. You don't have to have a mind for that, you know, very often. Mr. Management, which is workers comp in general, reliable insurance of buildings, vehicles, et cetera, forty-two percent. That's higher than twenty-nine because we have semi annual payments for that material. The special projects, that's at forty-three percent. But if you look at that detail, it's carries the cemeteries and they won't want that crazy lawsuit around our payroll. They're willing to force us for that. We only pay four thousand dollars, not seven thousand dollars. So it's, it's not too worried. Town clerk, town meeting, you don't have any, so it's at one percent. Treasurer is at eighty-three percent because we've been paying the honor which is most of activity for the year. Unclassified at ninety-four percent because we have paid the mill flame inspection, three thousand dollars there. We paid what key the dues are five thousand, we don't pay, no, any of that. So that's a ninety-four. One oh two for utilities, because we, if you look, because I flagged one shift district down there, thirteen thousand one. That's not, you know, a budget, we just carry here for tracking purposes. Do that with, that item. Supposedly they still look like it's over, that's not it. Board of Committees, forty-three percent. But if you look, they're minimalized, flag losing memberships to the KBC Hogs, paid, you know, sort of paid events. And then if you look at the Cubs and Rikers, twenty-seven percent, it's good. Recreation five, forty-nine percent, but that's summer, I know it's summer, so it's, it's, I love that. Animal Service, fifty percent, but we paid the poor thing we wanted to pay to. The cable control, seventeen percent. Code enforcement, thirty-one percent. A third reason for this too, of these, there's, there's, oh, I think he pays, for example, office supply, which is the computer stuff, you know, that it's. The fire department, twenty-six percent. Police department, twenty-three percent, thank you very much. Dispatch, fifty-seven percent, we pay that in the animal strong, the subset for the U nine one line coily to the people at Rhythm, police department. The summer public works, seventy-three percent, and summers mostly over, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, so summer, yeah. And no weekly activities, so the video. Solid base reception, twenty-eight percent. Time office, twenty-one percent. Maintenance, maintenance, thirty-one percent. Overall, thirty-five percent, it's lower than our expectations. Do you have any questions on that?